Call this Green Hills Council meeting for December 20, 2022. The order.
Do you see the roll?
Yeah.
Are you going to do it for ya?
Do the roll.
Holter. Lee.
Here.
Osmondoglu.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Hudson. Walter.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Rachel. Ms. Mayor, I've moved that we go into executive sessions for discussing compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have to do a roll call, but it's fine.
Oh, roll call. Ready? Holter. Oh, Lee.
Here.
Osmondoglu.
You're going with aye.
We're going with aye.
Aye.
This is aye.
Aye. Hermes.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Moore.
Okay. All right. We'll be back in a few.
Mr. Mayor, I move if we come out of executive session.
Second.
You seconded it before.
Second.
You did it second. Do we do a roll call?
Yeah.
Holter.
Holter, yes?
Yes.
Here.
Osmondoglu. Aye.
Yes.
Hermes.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Okay. We're out of executive session. And we now need to queue the TV people.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to do another roll call for this? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Just make a note that Mr. Holder arrived. Okay, we have.
Mr. Mayor, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda to include resolution.
Wait till the, maybe wait till the. What, do we want to do the prayer first?
Sure.
Yes, let's do the prayer first. Maria has a prayer.
Lord, we are finishing up this year as we begin a new year less of resolve to keep a promise, seek out a forgotten friend, listen, laugh, brighten the heart of a child, encourage the young, appreciate our elders, express our gratitude and take pleasure in the beauty and wonder of life, and speak your love to others. God, guide us in this new year to grow closer together in our families, in our unit, in our world, and in our council. Let us always strive to bring peace to the world. Let us live each day to the fullest. For all the blessings of the year, we give you thanks, you God, amen.
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I'll go ahead and do the approval of minutes. Anybody have any corrections?
I didn't find any corrections. Everything seems to be fine.
All right. The minutes for the November 22, 2022, regular council meeting stand approved. And is there another one?
I don't.
That's it. All right. Okay. You want to make a motion?
Now, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add an additional resolution number 2022 R-40F.
You need a second? Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on. Women's Auxiliary.
David, I've seen many, many times, but all of you are new to me. I'm a graduate of Green Hills High School. My oldest brother taught here. My middle brother was the first graduating class from the new school, which is now a very old school. And my youngest brother, he was a police officer and he was in the Army. He went to all the elementary, he went to elementary schools here. He just passed away a few months ago. Anyways, we love Green Hills, and that's why I'm here as part of, I am president of the American Legion. It's not, the auxiliary is not for just women anymore. We welcome men like my six-foot son-in-law, whose first wife was a Army officer. Now divorced, but he still could join the auxiliary, but I doubt that he'd want to do that. But anyways, it's now open to men who have wives or mothers who were in the service. And that's something, although they voted on it a couple of years ago, it's very new to us. We wanted to do something for the community. And Maria is our secretary and chaplain. And her and I got together and discussed this with other people, that one of the things we could do to help not only veterans and people that serve in the service, but to help our community. And so Maria talked to, I had some ideas, and Maria voiced her concerns to the police chief. And so I have checks here to present to the police chief. One is for the Carvar, I've never heard that word.
Bulletproof vest.
Bulletproof vest. I know what that is. For the new police officer. And it's really neat at this time, you know, that Cincinnati has a new police chief that's a woman, and the treasurer of the United States, the new person is a woman. The director of financial concerns in the United States is a woman, and we're coming up there. We're doing big things. So I'd like to present a check for $700 to cover her bulletproof vest. Now, don't leave. And also a check for $1,000 to be one-third of what it would cost for an AED unit, as I said, the bumper. And my husband recently had heart trouble, and we know how important that is. And I'd like to present him with a check for $1,000.
I'm matching the donation for the AED. Only I know how many times Officer Patton, or you show up at my house on my call, you were the first ones there, and I know how important it is to you and to us, to everybody here, to have that. So I'm matching the donation for the AED. I need to remember that.
On behalf of the ability to hear in the hills and the Green Hills Police Department, thank you both very much. I want you to go over to support our veterans and continue to work to support our community and make sure that it's what it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We have no public hearings. Reports of municipal officials, Municipal Manager Yvonne Kobach.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to review the legislative report for tonight. And we do have a lot of legislation in front of it. A lot of it is finance-related, so if the finance director hears anything she wants to add or portray inaccurately, feel free to jump in.
All right.
The first resolution on your agenda is what is going to be the final supplemental for this particular year. I think there's four different accounts that we're putting money into. The reason being mostly just to ensure that there's enough money in each of those. We have an additional payroll in December, and you just never know what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. So it is helpful to cover your expenses. The next item is the fee schedule, a new fee schedule for this year. And I guess, what is your pleasure? Would you like me to go through each of those changes now or when we're doing the legislation?
Wait for the legislation.
Okay. Because it's been a long time since we've made a lot of changes, but we are making a lot of changes tonight to help us as we go forward. So I'll go through that then as we get to that particular item. The next resolution, number 36, awards the 2023 property and liability insurance coverage to, once again, to PEP, the Public Entities Pool. You know, I always have all good stuff to say about PEP. They're pretty amazing. They did actually give a credit to their members this year, which actually has lowered our premium, this 2023's premium below 2022. So that was very helpful for us. And that premium for this year is $56,039 compared with last year. That was $57,277. So every little bit helps. The next resolution. Okay, we are once again doing a new three-year agreement for the electric aggregation program. The little bid, you know that we have a consultant who works on this every time he comes up and does all of our independent energy consultants. They do all the solicitation of bids and evaluate them and make recommendations. Then they come and meet with, it's usually the mayor and I, to review the bids. So Energy Harbor is again the one that we're going to be recommending. To, you know, this stuff's really, really quite in-depth to try to understand it, but in a nutshell, for the first, first of all, our current one ends in March, March of 2023, and then the new rates will kick in. For at least the first three months, they are, our rates will be higher than Duke's. However, Duke is proposing something that's going to go into effect in June, and then our rates will be lower. But I, you know, residents may be concerned that there would be a three-month period. Remember that our program, you can move in and out of it with no fee. But they also need to be careful that if they're moving out of somebody else's, you know, once it's like, if they opt out this time and then want to move out of one to get ours when we do have a lower rate, there might be a termination fee. And that was one thing in all the solicitation of bids this year that really stood out to them is how many of the entities were charging really hefty termination fees. So we're lucky, once again, they always say, no, we can't have one in our program. So we're still pretty lucky. So for about three months, it will be higher. We're only going with a 24-month period this time rather than a three or four year to give us the opportunity, if the market improves, which they're projecting that it will improve, we have the opportunity to get an even lower rate after 24 months. So we thought that was a pretty good idea. Let's see here. Okay, and be aware again, council and residents, that there is, the Public Utility Commission on their website does have a chart that you can go through and compare our rates to all the other ones in the state to get a sense of where we are in comparison. And again, ours will stack up pretty good. So letters are going to go out in February to anybody informing them of the new offer. If they don't want to participate, they have 21 days to opt out. Otherwise, if you want to stay in it, just do nothing. Again, I already mentioned no termination fee. It's completely voluntary to be part of it. And for those of you who may not have been with us way back when, the aggregation programs were actually voter-approved back in 2010 and still continues today and has resulted in some savings for folks.
Considerable savings.
Yeah.
In excess of a million dollars.
Okay, moving on, and I see that I put the wrong, the next resolution, number 38, should say F for finance, my S and S, I apologize. This is another financial one, which is actually our appropriation for 2023. The appropriation is essentially our spending plan for the next fiscal year. And then finally, resolution number 39 is another assessment of some code violations where the village had to remedy the violation. And there's a lot of questions.
Comments of the manager? Hello, Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Really nothing to report. The village is not involved in any pending legal matters right now, and there still does not appear to be any state legislation of municipal interest right now. So nothing to report. That may change, you know, after the new General Assembly takes office in January.
Clerk of Council Teresa Lali.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Chief of Police Neil Ferbman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christmas was ushered into Green Hills with a whole lot of excitement on December 2. We participated in Light Up Green Hills, always just a fun event to participate in. We thank former council member Metz for starting this tradition, but we had cookies with the cops. So we had a very well-attended booth in spite of some of the frigid weather and some of the wind that night. But at any rate, we gave away a lot of cookies and made some new friends. So we appreciate the opportunity to partner with the fire department and helping get Santa there safely and enjoying the night. A bit of sad news, you met new officer Anna Hall last meeting, and unfortunately, after three weeks, she decided that law enforcement was not the career for her. So she has resigned, and the search has resumed for the best candidate for the department. We're doing background searches or investigations right now on the two top candidates, so we will bring that candidate before you as soon as we're able to complete that and offer employment. We do have some new videos that courtesy of Waycross Community Media that's broadcasting this event right now. We actually were involved in two videos with them, one talking with Green Hills, and the second was about our Citizens Police Academy. If you look at our website, our December newsletter is on there. That contains links to both of those videos, if you would be interested. As you know, we recently had an event at our school where it was one of the prank calls of an active shooter, and there was not an active shooter. It was a very, very young student that was involved in this. The prosecutor declined to prosecute because of the student's very, very young age. However, it made a significant impact upon our students at our south campus, the primary school. If you drive by there, you'll see all kinds of posters that have been placed up there, and it says, Hands Down, You're the Best. And it has a police badge and a fire badge. And so the students wrote us many, many thank you cards. They were just wonderful to read, thanking us for our response on that day and telling us that we made them feel safe. So we appreciate that kind of interaction with our school. And particularly Principal Jeremy Day down there has welcomed us in from day one, and we feel very much at home there. And we go down there periodically to read with the students or just to be with them. So we appreciate that activity. A couple of things that, if anyone is listening from home and all of you, that we want you to be aware of is that porch pirates are out, although we've not had an active report this month so far. But in our newsletter for this month, we have a number of tips that might protect your porch packages and might be worthwhile taking a look at those. There's all kinds of techniques that you may not have thought of. The other thing that is breaking news, I suppose, is that although mailbox thefts from mailboxes have been going on for a while, and there have been some apprehensions made in the tri-state area of some of those thieves, we did find out just today that our mailbox right here in front of the shopping center was the victim of the theft. So we have encouraged anyone that might have used that box on around the middle of the month, right around the 15th, 16th, 17th, to check and make sure that mail has arrived. And that mail has been recovered by another police agency. So if you contact us, we can put you in touch with that agency to see if maybe your mail could be recovered. The holiday season is upcoming. Unfortunately, that is a peak period for drunk driving arrests, and coupled with at least the tentative forecast for this Christmas, it's going to be a very difficult time to be on the road. So we encourage people to stay home if you can and make sure that you have a driver that is not impaired if you are going to be out during the holidays. In terms of criminal statistics, in the past month, we made 19 criminal arrests, including arrests for criminal damaging, disorderly conduct, domestic violence, possession of drugs, open container, animals running at large, and fail to appear. We responded to 202 incidents in the last month. Those include 31 squad runs, 14 intrusion alarms, nine lockouts, eight parking complaints, six fire runs, five disabled vehicles, five trouble runs, and five juvenile complaints. We provided mutual aid to our neighbors in 15 instances. We issued 26 traffic citations, 34 warnings, and investigated three traffic crashes. That concludes the police report, and we wish all those listening and all of you a very safe and happy holiday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments of the chief?
I have a question, Chief. On the mailbox, so there's, I know it's evidence in a way, is that the mail that was taken? Because it seems like it would be, since the packages, I mean, letters would already have addresses, it seems like it would be something that would just be put back into the process and delivered. Because it seems, it's hard to know, like, oh, I maybe didn't get something and then tried to contact you or them.
It's my understanding that it's not us that has custody of that evidence, but it's my understanding that if someone finds or suspects that their mail was released, that it could be, or was taken, that it could be released to them. I don't, I don't think it's going to be held as evidence.
Okay. But I guess what I'm wondering is, is it something we can ask if that can be just passed on?
To the post office.
Yeah, just deliver it. Why can't it be delivered?
To continue the path.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that because this just happened today, and we just discovered it this afternoon. But I'm sure eventually that would in fact happen.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Chief, I got two emails that puzzled me, and of course, when something, it doesn't sound right, it's obviously not right, both from UPS and from DHL, saying that I had a package that was not deliverable because I was not home, and therefore I had to notify them, went to deliver it. But the postage due was $1.95, and it had to give my credit card for that. So I had nothing pending. I was not expecting anything, so, and I did not buy anything in the mail, so therefore I just totally disregard that. But that's, I got one first and then the other one. And I stopped the delivery people in Damon Road. Listen, is this your proper thing? What is this about credit card and $1.95? So that's not us.
Right. Thieves have gotten lazier over the years, and it doesn't take much effort to send out thousands of those inquiries in the hopes that they'll get one or two.
One or two, yeah.
People that might bite. So when you get an unsolicited email, it's good to look up the original number and check that out. There's a very easy tip, if you look at the very top of the email, typically it'll say it's from UPS or someone that have a very real-looking logo, which they can easily copy. But then it'll say it's from johnsmith@xyz.com or something. So that's a very good hint. But if it's unsolicited and it's something that asks for personal information, my advice is to market the spam and delete it.
And just one other pointer on that, lots of times in the heading, it will look official, and you have to click on that and see the actual email address. Where if it does, if it's coming from Gmail or something else. But you might, if you don't go that one level deeper, you won't know if it's.
We had a personal one today, and my husband called right away, and I said, that's a phishing scam, and they wanted our address. They said it was undeliverable. Could we get your address? I said, don't give any information, just leave it alone.
Lieutenant Ward received one in the office at 3:30 today on her cell phone, and they told her that they had a problem with her credit card, and she very adeptly said, I don't have a credit card. And she said, if you have, if you know my credit card number, what's my name? And they said, well, we don't have your name. And she said, well, this is a police lieutenant, and you're a scammer. That was the end of that call.
That was a click after that, yeah.
Wrong number.
I'm surprised with all the information that has gone out about using drop-off boxes for mailing, that somebody mailed that many checks in that box down there.
Well, we would urge people to go to the nearest post office and go inside. It's a good way to get extra steps on your Fitbit and make sure that your mail is safe.
Right. All right, moving on. It's me. Okay. I have Mayor's Court, bank balance for the Mayor's Courts, $18,354.14. Checks to be issued to the State of Ohio, $825. Hamilton County, $33. And the Village of Green Hills, $3,572.60. And then I have one other item. Get a letter from Duke. They're applying to the PUCO to reduce the gas distribution rates by $563,000, and it was because it was part of the accelerated main replacement program that they started in 2001, replacing steel and cast iron mains with plastic pipe. And so evidently, they've replaced, I guess, close to 1,000 miles of cast iron mains and 192 miles of bare steel mains. And some of these mains dated back to 1873.
Wow.
So the savings, though, to gas users of Duke will average out about 11 cents a month savings or reduction in your gas bill. So don't spend it all Friday, when we're all going to be freezing and using a lot of gas. All right, that's all I have. Reports of committees, recreation, cable television, Rachel Hudson's. Rachel's not here. Do we have, do you want to cover anything?
Yeah, nothing to cover at this point.
Okay. Service and Streets, Jennifer Osmondoglu.
Thank you. After the holidays, I plan on scheduling a meeting for the Streets and Services Committee to go over the new year and exciting happenings on the streets of Green Hills. I did want to mention, we did the decoration judging this past week, and I had someone ask me when they'll find out.
Well, the artwork was completed today, and should I send it up to the office? I don't know if they have card stock, but I imagine.
Next few weeks.
Yeah, next week, but it'd be reasonable.
Okay.
Well, they may not get their major award until I get it all distributed to everybody to pass them out.
And then we have to go on.
Do you want to pickle this in the journal?
Yes, and so we probably have it in the next journal, which comes out.
Well, the deadline's next Friday.
Next Friday, okay. So we should be able to get a list.
No, it's coming Friday, the Friday after that.
Okay.
Okay. And then as the bad weather is supposed to approach this week, everybody try to keep, I know it's hard, there's so many cars that you can't move off the street because you have nowhere else to park, but kind of be aware of what's going on. If you can move on, try to help out the street clearing guys. So, thanks a lot.
Let's hope, well, we don't get any accumulation, but that being said, we'll probably have 10 inches.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Nothing to report. We'll have a meeting at the beginning of the year, and we were just discussing if we might have some, a date change. So we'll get that finalized and get a schedule kind of for the rest of the year, what we're planning on doing.
Okay. Finance and audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just abbreviated general fund recap at your place tonight. You'll see the, the numbers are all moving in a positive direction. Overall, general fund balance as of the end of November was $1,976,786.09, which is, at this point, a 5.82% increase over 2021. There were no transfers for the month. The expenditures as a percentage of appropriation is within target. We had a meeting on, is that the 7th? Yeah. With finance director and municipal manager to go over the appropriations. Deb, I'll just defer to you at this point.
Okay. I'll just mention one other thing on the recap for the general fund. As of the end of November, you'll see that the amount of expenditures versus the appropriation was just a little over 56%. And you think, well, that's toward the end of the year. We've moved up quite a bit. We are now really on target. We have expended 94% of that. So we finished up a lot of big projects that were not paid as of the end of November. So that brings it more in line. It just looks a little funny to see that at the end of November, and you think, well, we've only spent half of our money. But we've paid out quite a bit the last couple of weeks to get things tucked in for the end of the year.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Another question. Am I totally off the target, but the non-voted debt, is that something that is coming off in December or not yet?
It did.
Okay, it did.
Yes, yes. Both of the councilmatic debt services with US Bank and PNC are now paid in full. How about that? The debt is gone. We have just that one other redevelopment bond that will expire in '24.
Okay. So only one left?
Yes, just one left. How about that?
All right. Hey, community development, Jeff Holder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't have a meeting, but I did meet with Yvonne, and we've already started to talk about harvest dust and some of the other things we have planned for the year, getting ahead of that, giving a little more lead time as we prepare for the upcoming year. I'm kind of dancing a little bit over into recreation for a second. There is the pickleball courts. We're talking about possibly, you know, finishing that off. We do have the equipment, but there are other things that are needed. But that is back on the table post all the COVID and all the things that have been going on, but we'll keep you informed about that. And I'm giving you like the mutual fund of presentation, C.R.A. politics, a mixture. The other thing I wanted to mention that I maybe should have mentioned earlier is we received a total of six bills from Duke in one day, totaling over $1,000.
This is at your house?
At my house.
Right.
And my wife was concerned about, hey, we haven't had a Duke bill in a while, and then we got six of them. Turns out there was air on their end of it. But now it also doesn't have the gas along with the electric. Found out that we owe a lot, less than $1,000, which was nice. The only reason I mention that is I did hear of another resident that ran into a similar situation. So I would recommend before panic strikes to call them. They were very accommodating. They obviously have some big issue on their part with the billing, at least with some of us. But I just thought I'd mention it in case any other residents were, you know, shocked by six bills worth of mail. And that concludes my report.
Okay. And I also had a screwed up bill, but it was about five months ago.
Okay.
And it was all messed up like that. And Yvonne.
I just got one.
Had a similar.
Yeah. Well, and to add one other small thing to that, especially our older residents, like, you know, if you see something that doesn't make sense, you know, it doesn't hurt to question it. You might find out it's legitimate, but really be very careful. Well, okay, this is official. I know it's from them. I'll just pay it. Yeah, you might end up with a credit if they figure it out, but it doesn't hurt to give them a call and just double check. Given the kind of craziness.
And I also noticed, don't mind, that I was in our aggregation programs, and that crazy bill, I was not. So checking for that too, making sure you're still there.
How do you go about checking that? Is it just?
It'll be written on the back of the bill, like, where they divide up the distribution.
And so you had to call them in order to say?
I just got the bill. I haven't had a chance to call them, but yeah, so that was wrong as well.
And actually, when we had the meeting with the aggregation group, some people, they said, didn't bid this year for the aggregation program because of the problems that Duke had run into with their new accounting system and billing system.
Oh, okay.
So it's, more people are noticing it. Okay, moving on. In our governmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walter.
We're going to be meeting at the beginning of the year, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We'll have a date for you in January. And may I ask, what is going to be our organizational meeting in January?
We'll do it the, what is it? Second Tuesday?
The second Tuesday? Okay.
Yeah. Okay. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate that you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, and then state your comments. Comments are limited to four minutes. All right, we have no unfinished business. New business, resolution number 2022-R34-F, making supplemental appropriations and transfers, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-R34-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2022 annual appropriations were adopted on December 14, 2021, are to be amended. And whereas the appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, since certain actions are needed and monies appropriated, so to permit the village to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2022, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2022. Fund description, general fund, 1,070.71. Original appropriation, 327,000. Change is 5,000. The new total is 332,000. Next is general fund, 1,072. Mayor's court, original appropriation, $75,000. Change, 5,000. New total, 80,000. Next, next item, general fund, 1,072.5. Finance, 166,000. Change is an increase of 15,000 for a new total of 181,000. Next item is general fund, 1,073. Lands and buildings, original appropriation, 784,000. Change is an additional 26,000. New total is $810,000. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies? None. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Very none. Clerk call the poll.
Ms. Hermes? Aye. Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2022-R34-F passes. Next, resolution number 2022-R35-F, resolution adopting the 2023 Green Hills fee schedule. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-R35-F, resolution adopting the 2023 Green Hills fee schedule. Whereas the village has determined it is necessary to assess fees for certain services, and whereas council updates the fee schedule annually, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio, that section 1, the Council of the Village of Green Hills hereby adopts the fee schedule as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this resolution shall be and is effective from and after earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We have some comments now on that?
Sure. And I did, the one that's in your packet, the highlights, to try and help them stand out for you, where we're making some changes, but I'll run through those quickly. The first one, you'll see the gazebo, we crossed that out. Our feeling is we, rarely do we rent them separately or rent them at all. So if you rent the gazebo, it will fall under the commons. Is what we're accomplishing there. We didn't change anything on the rental of the commons. That stayed the same. The picnic shelter went up from, I think we put them up $25? No, it was Monday through Thursday, resident or member of the pool was $75. It is now $125. Non-resident, $225. Previously, $175. I don't want to give them both to confuse you here, but, because they all go up, kind of step up uniformly. We also made an increase on the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're still very low in comparison. I did have someone in the office look at comparable places in the, in the county, and actually, several counties. And we're still low on these things, but.
And some of that increase is to cover the cost of cleanup, which has been an issue.
That's become a pretty standard thing that takes up time. And we may actually, since we now do them in two shifts, we realize that, and it's very popular, but they're, they can't be back-to-back. They were previously like noon to 4, 4 to 8. So now we're putting a time, 11:03 at 4 to 8, because we were having to have people go up there, service workers, and clean up, fix up for the next person. So that will help to cover that cost. And we increased the cost per person. They do get a discount if they have their attendees entering the pool as well. That amount, I believe, was for, five, it was $5. It is now $7 per person. Service building rent, we're putting the rent up $5 a month for the ones in the service building. The way it will keep being the same because of all the work that's needed on those garages. Then skip down to the pool, which is the largest heat area, because we have so many different categories. We're trying to simplify a little bit, but essentially, we're raising all of the resident, non-resident family. Looks like they're going up like 200, excuse me, $20. It was 180 for the discounted rate. It's 200 even now. Non-residents, oh, and another thing, up to five people, then $10 per person for additional family members. It was $5. Non-resident went from $255 up to $280 there. After they're five people, it was $10. It is now $20 per person. Some of the rationale there is when you think about one person getting, you know, $5 is dirt cheap for another person there, you know, so it seemed reasonable to bump that up a little bit. Babysitter pass, we're putting it $50. It was 25. Single, looks like it's up $20. Non-resident, $30. Seniors went from $60 to $70. Non-resident, single, from 90 to 110. The daily rates, which is a big category for us, we do collect a lot of revenue in our, on daily rates. So under three, it will remain free. Anybody over three, we put it at $10. We have had a breakdown, which, you know, for staff, it's hard to tell who's, how old people or whatever. Children require just as much lifeguard assistance as, as an adult, probably more. So it seemed like a no-brainer there. And we're sticking with the five after five because that's very popular. 65 and up, $5 any time. That went up $1. Single for the swim team, last year was the first year that we did that. They were fabulous about working with, with us on that. So I, we're not proposing any changes to that right now. Skipping down to the rental inspection, this is not a new fee. It's actually in our ordinance, but we didn't have it on the fee schedule and rarely used it. And that's when there is the necessity to go back to somebody's property to re-inspect. There is a $50 charge associated with that. And I, what the code enforcement officer's been encountering sometimes is the people, property owner may show up, and there's like lots of violations, and they didn't even prepare for it, you know? So it was kind of a waste of time. He had to document it, go back for a reinspection, so that person will be charged the reinspection fees now. Then a couple of new ones that we threw in down at the end, towards the end there are plastic bags, $10. We were charging six for them. We're really, we've decided to kind of go out of the plastic bag business. I guess you would say that for the ones that we have left, we all just do flat rate, $10 per bag until they're gone. Then a new one is the digital sign. We've not been charging for that up till now, so this is a measly amount, but hopefully it will be affordable for our businesses. And it's a dollar, essentially a dollar a day, which for, you know, a month of, of advertising, $30 is pretty daygone cheap. We're going to do a minimum of $7, even if they just wanted for a couple of days because there is some staff time associated with putting it up. But any, all payments have to be received in advance before we will put the sign up. So we'll start advertising that. And I'm thinking probably by mid-January, we should have gotten word out. I'm going to be putting out a newsletter to the businesses, and we'll get it in the journal for that particular fee. Any questions on that?
Can you clarify what the plastic bags are used for?
Oh, yes. Covering your mattresses.
And chairs.
Shares, sofas. And one thing that we, we're having to stress now is, in addition to being covered by plastic, Rumpkey wants to be sure that it's taped all the way around the item. If their hands have to touch the upholstery anywhere, they won't take it. So, yeah, you know, it's getting a little more complex. Our bags, I think we were finding weren't coming all the way around.
Correct.
On some of the items, the different sofas. And tape is needed as well, so, you know, a little more complicated. But yes.
And we were finding that the bags are readily available from.
Right, yeah, they are.
Your Home Depot, Rose.
Would it make sense to just title that Furniture Plastic Bags? I mean, it's a precious.
You're right, just saying, plastic bags. We'll do that.
And then maybe put after the $10 until the wall supplies last.
Yeah.
So there's knowledge that once they run out.
They're out.
They're out.
This is a special, $10.
Going out of business.
Going out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Clerk poll the council.
Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three Green Hills fee schedule, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, R, da, R thirty, dash R thirty-five dash F passes. Okay, next resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-six dash F, awarding the twenty twenty-three property and liability insurance cover, coverage to the public entities pool of Ohio. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two, R thirty-six, F, resolution awarding the, the twenty twenty-three property and liability insurance coverage to the public entities pool of Ohio, whereas the Village of Green Hills must have continuous insurance coverage and has been presented with an acceptable insurance proposal with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, also known as P E P, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village Green, Green Hills, State of Ohio, that section one, the insurance policy proposal from P E P, brokered by U S I Insurance Services, L L C, for the insured issuance of automobile, general liability, police professional liability, public officials' liability, property insurance, and other insurance as determined by the municipal manager in the name of the Village Green Hills, is hereby accepted at a cost to the village in the amount of fifty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars and zero cents. A copy of the proposed policy is on file with the municipal manager. Section two, the municipal manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute any or all documents necessarily, necessary to implement said coverage. Section three, the finance director is hereby authorized and directed to make payment to P E P in the amount of fifty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, uh-
Fifty-six thousand. Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine dollars for the two thousand twenty-three coverage. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution with the small typo correction.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Been moved and seconded? Okay, clerk pull the council?
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-six dash F, awarding the twenty twenty-three property and liability insurance coverage to the public entities pool of Ohio, passes. Next, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-seven dash S and S, authorizing the municipal manager to enter, execute a First Amendment to the master agreement with Energy Harbor, L L C. Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-seven dash S and S, resolution authorizing the municipal manager to execute a First Amendment to the master agreement with Energy Harbor, L L C. Whereas the village previously entered into a master agreement with Energy Harbor, L L C, on January fifteenth, twenty twenty, and whereas Energy Harbor, L L C, was the best bid, recent solicitation of bids prepared and implemented for the village by independent energy consultants, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, County of Hamilton, State of Ohio. Section one, the municipal manager of Green Hills is hereby authorized to enter into a First Amendment to the master services agreement for electric supply, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit A. Section two, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one dot two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and affect immediately upon its passage and approval by the village. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
Just, just that there is an extensive, uh, exhibit A to this, and I'm sure that if anyone should want to read it, they, they're, welcome to a copy of it.
Clerk pull the council?
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-seven dash S and S, passes. Resolution, resolution authorizing the municipal manager to execute a First Amendment to the master agreement with Energy Harbor, L L C. Okay, next resolution, number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-eight dash F, approving the annual permanent appropriations for twenty twenty-three. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two, R thirty-eight, F, resolution approving the annual permanent appropriations for twenty twenty-three. A resolution to make permanent appropriations for the current expenses, expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, pursuant to exhibit A, permit appropriation for twenty twenty-three, attached hereto, and by reference made a part hereof. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, State of Ohio, section one, to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Green Hills during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The following sums be, and they are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows, namely, that there be appropriated from the general fund, two million, three hundred and four thousand, fifty dollars. That there be appropriated from the special revenue funds, two million, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That there be appropriated from the debt bond retirement fund, fifty-five thousand, forty dollars. That there be appropriated from the special assessment fund, fifty thousand dollars, for a grand total of four million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars for all funds. Section two, that the village finance director is hereby authorized to draw warrants for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates in vouchers therefore approved by the board or officers authorized by law to approve the same or in ordinance or resolution of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance. Section three, any necessary changes to be made to the appropriations below the legal level of control can be made by the finance director with the approval of the municipal manager. Any changes to the appropriation at or above the legal level of control require village council approval. Section four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any comments or questions? Clerk pull the council?
Okay, Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-eight dash F, passes. Resolution approving the annual permanent appropriations for twenty twenty-three. Okay, next resolution, number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-nine dash S and S, authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Mr. Lee?
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two, R thirty-nine dash F, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuge, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuge, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the, the placement of a lien upon the lands and collected as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, that the village hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the, the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number five nine seven zero zero three zero 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 three eight dash zero zero. Address, number one, Gambier Circle. Owner, Ronald Smith, Jr., in Shanda, K. Page. Cost, three hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Parcel number five nine seven zero zero one zero 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 eight three dash zero zero. Number six, Imbler Drive. Owner, Justin Cornell. Cost, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents. The total is seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Section two, that all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed in the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section three, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Clerk pull the council?
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R thirty-nine dash S and S, resolution authorizing assessment on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills, passes. Okay, we're gonna do the, the re, next resolution then. Okay, and what number was that, forty?
Forty.
Yeah, okay. All right. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R forty dash F, resolution authorizing increases for salaried employees. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two, R forty dash F, resolution authorizing increases for salaried employees, whereas the salaried employees are not part of the step schedules previously adopted by the village council. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, State of Ohio, that section one, salaried personnel, finance director, police chief, municipal manager, shall receive a two percent increase in compensation as of the first full pay period in January twenty twenty-three. Section two, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments on the resolution?
Just that there was a typo by the clerk of council signature.
Okay.
I'll amend it. I'll, I'll make it right.
All right, clerk pull the council?
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osman-Nedlu?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R forty dash F, resolution authorizing the increase, increases for salaried employees, passes. Next thing we have is a motion to nominate Rachel Hudson to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the C P B Holdings, Inc., to fill the seat that's required to be held by a member of council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion nominating Rachel Hudson to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the C P B Holdings, Inc., to fill the seat that is required to be held by a member of council.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, do we have, um, any more comments from council members who want to make before, uh, we end this final meeting of the year? And wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy Hanukkah.
And try to stay warm. Okay, all right. Municipal calendar, do we have anything for the calendar?
Well, for next year, we haven't discussed that.
Yeah, organizational meeting, January tenth.
Okay. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate that you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, then state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of use, ease of transcription. Uh, comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all their time to other speakers.
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. I'm here tonight to speak about a lawsuit filed against the Federal Communications Commission, F C C, and why it's relevant to the small cells facility ordinance passed by council members in September. The Green Hills ordinance does not provide the maximum power available to the village to prevent the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities and the adverse impacts they could have here. This leaves us needlessly vulnerable to the installation of unnecessary and unwanted infrastructure. All of you, except for Rachel, were on council when I read excerpts from the twenty twenty-one federal court ruling in favor of petitioners who sued the F C C for its decision to not update its nineteen ninety-six exposure limits for wireless radiation from cell towers, antennas, and other wireless sources. The lead petitioner in that case was Environmental Health Trust, and I'm going to read again from what was posted about this on their website. The United States Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit rules in favor of environmental health groups and petitioners, and finds the F C C violated the Administrative Procedure Act and failed to respond to comments on environmental harm. The court ruled that the F C C's decision to retain its nineteen ninety-six safety limits for human exposure to wireless radiation was, quote, arbitrary and capricious. The court held that the F C C failed to respond to, quote, "Record evidence that exposure to R F radiation at levels below the commission's current limits may cause negative health effects unrelated to cancer," end quote. Further, the agency demonstrated, quote, "A complete failure to respond to comments concerning environmental harm caused by R F radiation," end quote. The court found the F C C ignored numerous organizations, scientists, and medical doctors who called on them to update limits, and it failed to address impacts of long-term wireless exposure, impacts to children, the testimony of people injured by wireless radiation, impacts to wildlife and the environment, impacts to the developing brain and reproduction. Dr. Jerome Paulson, former chair of the American Academy of Pediatrics Environmental Health Council, and now professor emeritus of pediatrics and environmental and occupational health at George Washington University School of Medicine and Health Sciences, and Milken Institute School of Public Health, stated, quote, "I am pleased, sorry, I am very pleased to see that the U.S. Court of Appeals for the D C Circuit has ruled that the F C C ignored decades of studies about the potential health harms of cellphone radiation, and must adequately review this material before making a decision about new regulations of cell phones," end quote. He also said, quote, "It is very important that the court ruled that the F C C must address the impacts of radio frequency radiation on the health of children amassed since nineteen ninety-six," and- end quote. The American Academy of Pediatrics submission to the FCC called for a review of safety limits to protect children and pregnant women. The FCC has yet to address this. However, in the meantime, other local communities have passed protective wireless ordinances that are stronger than ours. So I ask again that you strengthen our small cell facilities ordinance to prevent the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities and the adverse impacts they could have in our community. Thank you. Happy holidays.
You too. You too. Okay, anybody else? All right. Meeting adjourned.